Being seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Bospas.
Here.
Commissioner Baker.
Here.
Commissioner Collins.
Here.
Commissioner Gary.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Talantino.
Here.
Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible).
I would ask those with cell phones if you would please put them on vibrate or silence them by turning them off, we would appreciate it. We'd also like to welcome the Youth Advisory Council members from the Chippewa County Community Foundation. They have some items, they have an item on the agenda later on that will be presented by someone here on the Commission. And also, the Community Foundation is directors here, Debbie Jones is also here. Okay, with that roll, let's see, we're going to be proclamations and recognitions, we have none at this time, so in the public comment, there are public comment and scheduled agenda items. At this time, a person may reserve time to speak on an agenda item, not to exceed three minutes per person. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an agenda item? We have Caitlin and Jay in the back, and you will given an opportunity at the time we have the status report, okay? Anyone else? If not, we'll go to the consent agenda. Deputy City Manager.
Under the consent agenda, one, approval of the city commission meeting minutes of December 3, 2018. Item two, acceptance of the airport advisory board meeting minutes of November 8. Item three, acceptance of the community services board meeting minutes of November 28. Item four, acceptance of the economic development board meeting minutes of November 13. Item five is approval of the MERS healthcare savings program participation agreement for the clerical unit, non-union and department heads. Item six, approval of the 2019 part-time seasonal wage schedule. Item seven, scheduling of a public hearing for the CDVG funding relative to the rental rehabilitation project involving 221 and 223 West Portage Avenue, the Kalia properties. Item eight is from Chippewa County, county tax foreclosures. Item nine is from Daniel Possumi and Lori McDonald, request to release lien on parcel And item 10 is approval of the consent agenda items as presented.
Okay, thank you. Is there a Commissioner that likes something further explained on the consent agenda? Okay, let's go to Commissioner Collins.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Roll call, please.
Mayor Bospas.
Yes.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you.
Item E, special orders of business, one, annual audit presentation for the year ending June 30, 2018.
Okay, thank you. City Manager Turner.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ken Tausma with Anderson Tacman is here this evening to present the fiscal year 18 audit to the city commission and community.
Okay. Ken? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank the Mayor and City Commission for having me here to present the 2018 financial audit. The city of Sault Ste. Marie, like so many other cities and counties and townships and villages, has to have an audit annually to meet the requirements of the state of Michigan as far as an accounting of all their assets and obligations and revenues and expenses and fund balances and make sure everything is captured accurately with the proper internal controls as well as making sure there's evidence to supporting the financials as far as what you have for cash and obligations for debt and all those things. Some of the things we do usually are confirmation with the individual institutions that you have cash with and investments as well as the different institutions that you owe obligations of debt to, so we'll confirm that directly with them and confirm that with them to make sure that everything's accurate. And there's a lot of other things we do with transaction testing and looking at a lot of vouching of information to make sure that we have something to hang our hat on at the end of the day with the financials to know that you're able to put some together accurately as well as what you're showing everybody in the public is accurate and can be relied upon. So at the end of all that, we give our opinion on the financial statements, and that's on page two, the second page of our letter. And we give, can possibly give four, there's the adverse, what it means when we've got through the audit and done all of our testing and found that there's discrepancies that cannot be resolved, that's an adverse opinion, that's the one you don't want. There's also disclaimer when there isn't information to support the numbers or for unknown reasons we can't support some of these things. And then there's a modified, which pretty much means everything's okay except for maybe an item or area two are weak, but largely, maybe 90 percent of everything else is fine, that's a modified. Then the remainder is the unmodified, which means as far as accuracy of the statements as well as following the different accounting and auditing rules, everything was done in compliance with that and that you're following the different principles, accounting principles and standards without any exceptions. So the city received the unmodified opinion for, again, for 2018. The next thing we look into, we brought a, again, a packet of graphs to show how the financials turned out for 2018. In the first graph, usually we show the assets of the city and combined, it might be my own presentation. All right, so the first pie graph shows all the assets of the city. Like most cities, most of your assets are tied up in capital assets, all the infrastructure like the streets, water and sewer systems, sidewalks and things, as well as the different trucks and graders and dump trucks and vehicles and such. Then the next area, we have deferred outflows resources, which is kind of like a deferred loss, which ties in with the pension reporting that's required now. With, I think we're in the fourth year of having to report pension obligations, and with that, there's kind of a snapshot of how the plans are doing at this point in time, which is your year end of June 30, of comparing the assets in the plan versus the present value of the obligations of the plan, and that liability now is put on your combined balance sheet. And with that, we have certain deferred outflows, which are kind of like losses, and deferred inflows, which are like gains that are determined by the actuarial companies, which MERS has their own, and then the police and firemen also have their own, and they will amortize those over time anywhere ranging from, you know, three to five to seven years against that obligation and write those off. Next, you have cash and equivalents, about 9.5 million, and you have cash that's restricted, 3.6, and you have restricted cash for things such as debt covenants. You have investments that are restricted also for debt covenants and the water and sewer. You have receivables for the different water and sewer fees that are uncollected into the year, and you also have taxes receivable. You have special assessments for the different sidewalk and different projects done as they are paid over 10 years, and we have other things like inventories and prepaid. Next, we have the obligations of the city, which are the liabilities or the net position. Starting over on the left, we have compensated absences, which is employees sick in vacation time, again, those deferred inflows, which are like a deferred gain written off over time. We have investment capital assets, which is your, kind of your fund balance and your capital assets net of debt. And then we have restricted for trusts of 7.6, unrestricted a negative nine, which is negative mostly because of the advent of the pension reporting from, that came about four years ago. And that's pretty much affected most governments of having to record such a big obligation all of a sudden. Then we have accounts payable, bonds payable, all your different obligations, and the pension liability between the two plans is about 25 million. Next, we have the revenues of the government funds, which the big ones are the general fund as well as the major local streets, all the special revenue funds. And the lion's share of the revenues for the city, like most cities, is taxes, and that was a little bit better than last year, we landed about 7.3 million for property taxes. The special assessment revenue stayed pretty even. Licensees, permits, revenue was down to 30, federal also down. State sources went up quite a bit, we had 500,000 more in street fund monies this year compared to 2017, so that did better. I think the general fund got about 170,000 more in state grants than last year, and then the remainder, about 1.2 million, were just in the different capital project funds that happened in 2018 that were funded by additional state funding and those things. Local revenues, pretty comparable, charges for services, which are the different fees charged at the departments of the city. Rental's pretty even, interest earnings and other revenue also, pretty comparable. Then you have the expenses of those government funds, broken into the areas of legislative, which is the council, or the city commission, general government, which includes things like the treasurer, the clerk, elections, building and grounds. Public safety, which includes the police and fire, public works, which encompasses like DPW and the major and local streets. Health and welfare, which largely is the ambulance operations, that landed about 1.2 million, pretty close to last year. Rec and culture, which is the parks, different stadiums like the Polar Stadium. Capital and the capital outlay was about 2.3 million. Again, we had quite a bit more state funding in 2018, and again, that went towards different capital infrastructure for the city this year. And debt service was also about 522,000, which is principal interest on the general debt of the city, and then other expenditures about 300,000. We also have graphs showing the revenues of the water and sewer operations, that was about, landed about 7.1 million from last year, and other revenues and interest income also comparable. The next graph shows the expenses of water and sewer. Those, most notably, the personnel, which is the different salaries and fringes of the employees of the water and sewer departments, was a little bit lower, about 1.7 million compared to 1.9. Supplies were down, the contract of services stayed pretty level, insurance, utilities, repairs and maintenance on the system also pretty level, rental expenses. Depreciation is the depreciation of all the capital assets, like the infrastructure and different pumps and equipment for the water and sewer, was up a bit from about 1.5, 1.6. And interest expense was down 938,000 last year, but 982 this year for the payment of the debt on the water and sewer system. Again, most cities have a lot of debt on their water and sewer system because it's such a big infrastructure item, it's hard unless it gets donated, like in the community of Ken Ross Township, when the military left and they just gave it away. Cities have to pay a lot of special assessments debt just to get those constructed and keep them, keep them moving, so there's always a lot of bond and interest that goes in the upkeep and maintenance of those water and sewer systems. Then other expenses was about a million for the water and sewer fund. Page eight is the five-year trend of the fund balance of the general fund. This year, we had a little bit more of an upswing again, boat, I went from boat, almost 2.9 million in 17 to about 3.2. So you've gained a little bit, I think, in the budget, I think we're anticipating to go a little bit lower, but the way things turned out, I think, you know, maybe pushing off some capital projects until next year led to kind of ending the year a little bit stronger than anticipated. And you're still about in your, in your plan for your fun, maintaining a fund balance, I think usually the state finance officers administration has like a 10 to 15 percent floor that they always recommend for cities to not fall underneath, so you're in a safe place for, you know, whatever reasons that you've got money for, in case there's reductions in funding by the state or federal government, as well as any type of disaster or shortage of anything, so you have kind of a cushion. So again, you've landed, I think, in a safe place for 2018.
Ken?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins has a question.
Sure.
Ken, can you just explain how fund balances occur, just for basic audiences?
Sure.
I used to get a lot of questions on that, and that seems to be the one that kind of hangs out there.
Right, yeah, that's a good question. So fund balance is kind of like the, like what's left over each year of your operations. As you end the year, you either have a, have a kind of a profit or a loss, and that kind of accumulates in this fund balance account each year, so as long as the city's been in operation for however long, it's had some years it may, it added and some years it decreased, but fund balance is accumulation of all those years of surpluses and losses. And that's kind of your, what you have to, as part of your budget each year to work with, besides whatever you're planning to get for current year revenues and current year anticipated expenditures, so it's kind of your, your, your working surplus, or loss as some, some cities have, but in your case, it's to the better.
And this is a comment to the, the city commission several years ago ended up having a motion in a, decided that we would want it at least a 20 percent over the, to maintain a 20 percent yearly.
Right.
And if we could increase it, we would do that, knowing that we have some lean years and some, so that, actually at this point, it continues to increase at this point, so.
Right.
And then this year could be good, but next year, the city manager kind of will fill us in a little bit later on where that might go, you know, so it'll be a little leaner next year.
Right. Another thing that's been occurring with the state of Michigan, they have an ability now to track governments' current year general fund revenues and their expenditures, and if you have three years in a row that you have shortfalls, meaning your revenues are higher and expenditures, they'll send you a letter saying, you know, you're worrying that you're maybe in financial distress, what's going on, and they'll ask the city manager, whoever, to respond with, you know, what they're going through and what you're planning to do differently, so. I don't know with, with what's happened in some governments that they've had to turn, turn them over to whatever the financial administrators, I think that's their effort to try to get ahead of that and kind of watch people, so. That's occurring in some governments, that they're, they're doing that now and giving governments the, kind of the feeling that, hey, we're watching and seeing what's going on with you and trying to head off some of these problems as they occur, but. So it's like, it's a good thing to kind of, I think you have your fund balance, you have years that you kind of build it up, and you have years that you know that you're going to have, you know, leaner years or you need to spend that money for certain things, so it's kind of cyclical, and that's, and that's kind of the way it should be.
Okay, thank you.
The next graph on page nine shows the taxable values. Again, it's pretty, staying pretty even in the different areas of commercial, industrial, residential, agriculture and utility, not any too, too big increases in the, in the tax base there. And I think the last graph shows the revenue sharing, which is a big ticket item for revenues for cities. This year, we did a little bit better than last, I think you had about 1,547 in revenue sharing in 17, and we're about 1,602 in 18, so a little under 50,000 gain for revenue sharing. And again, with that, they still make you do quite a bit of work, jumping through a lot of hoops as far as the reporting that the administration of the city is required to do to provide a lot of financial information on the state's website with different financial indicators of how you guys are doing and a lot of information, a lot of information goes into that reporting, there's a lot of, quite a bit, a lot of work for the people that have to do it, so that's, seems to be doing, doing well, like as far for the city, seems like you're providing everything that you have to and letting them, letting them know all the information so that you're able to maximize the revenue sharing, and that's a good thing.
Just a comment on the 10 years revenue sharing trend. 2009, we got 1,622, 1,600,022 and some change, and almost 10 years later, we're at 1,602, so we're still 20,000 below what it wasn't in 2009, so.
Trying to cut, cut back.
Inflation to, into account is, is a tremendous loss for the city over those years, and we'll never make it up, but we, I know every, every year, we mention that as a, as a need when going forward, and once in a while, we get a little more than we think we're going to get, but.
Right.
It's, it's certainly not enough.
And I think the other thing that was hard during that period of time, it seemed like they, they pushed a lot more mandated, like mandated services that weren't funded too at a lot of governments, so not only were you losing money, but they were expecting more of what you did get. Otherwise, I think financially, I think, you know, you guys aren't doing, you've had a pretty good, stable year, I think made some modest gains in different areas, paid down, paid down your debt. The pension plans, let's see, that's always a good topic with you guys, you have obviously the two different plans, you have the MERS plan, which went down about 919,000, it landed about a $9 million liability, that's on page 54 of the report itself. And then on page 58, it shows the police and fire too, and that's at about 16 million. And kind of the takeaway with these pension plans and this, this reporting of the liability, I think when the Gatsby settled to do this, they just wanted to kind of keep this in front of you so that you're thinking about these numbers and where you're at at any point in time. I know when the, when the city Detroit had all their problems and they wanted to know, well, what's, what's in our, what are we obligated for that pension plan, what do we, what do we need and what do we have? With that, all this stuff, they had really no ideas, and I think that wasn't the only reason the Gatsby did these things, but they wanted to have more of a, an accounting of this and to have a realistic picture of where you were at any time, so you kind of could plan and react more, more better, and not just be caught off guard. And the other takeaway, I keep telling a lot of governments, is it's not a requirement that you be totally funded. I mean, realistically, you look at your employee mix, you have a lot of people, working a couple hundred people at the city, not everybody's going to retire tomorrow, there's some people that are brand new, some people 10 years in, five years, 15, so it's staggered. And it's kind of something that you just got to manage, you got to make sure that you're keeping it funded enough, to a good enough level, to make sure you're meeting your obligations as they come due. The truth is, it isn't 100 percent due, but at maybe, maybe a more realistic number is maybe between 60 and 70 percent, having that, that on hand is a better place to be.
Thank you, thank you, Ken. Commissioner Twardy.
So if I was going to ask the, the question, the build-in question, then I have a follow-up question. What would you give us as a rating then?
I'd give it A this year.
Give an A. And is part of that reasoning now because of the, the reporting from the pension funding system, has that brought us down just a little bit?
It brought, it brought you guys down, it brought, well, the truth is, it brought everybody down, unless they didn't, unless they didn't have a defined benefit plan.
Okay.
Some had already switched to defined contribution plans, like the state of Michigan did, you know, put a while ago, but.
However, that A rating, when we had to, when the city manager and then Kristin Collins had to sit down and, and create our longevity plan for how we were going to remedy our underfunded status, that A rating, I'm sure helps out in that report and helps keep the city, or the state maybe, from paying too close attention to our unfunded.
Right, because they are, that's the only, they are watching now, and they're, not that they can make you do anything, but they're, you know, push a lot of letters at you and ask you to write letters back and, and, you know, so a lot, again, a lot more work for administration to talk about these things and make them feel better at the end of the day, so.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
Any other questions? City Manager Turner.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the presentation from Mr. Tausma. As the mayor mentioned earlier, we have seen an increase in the general fund ratio from the close of fiscal year 17, which it stood at roughly 25.6 percent, saw that ratio increase for the general fund of 28.31 percent for expenses. And right now, we're currently anticipating that because of issues like the refund with the Michigan Tax Tribunal settlement with Cascade Crossings and some potentially lower-than-anticipated state funding sources and accrued labor costs, which will be paid out with settlement of collective bargaining agreements, that we'll see that dip down a bit for the next fiscal year, but we are, I think I'm very confident in this, in the trend in which the city is going, and I would anticipate that a minimum balance ratio of approximately 23 to 24 percent, I think, is reasonable once you control for those different kinds of considerations, which is right in line with the past three to four years. Very pleased with the work that the department heads, the finance director, the finance department staff have done, not only in regards to the day-to-day management of fiscal resources, but also with the presence of internal controls within departments to make sure that resources are protected and used as wisely as possible. Certainly a team effort, and one of the comments that we've been discussing internally is perhaps after the six-month budget review or during the budget development cycle, taking a look at what amount may be additionally contributed to pension funds. One of the considerations that the state of Michigan takes into account when we are discussing our pension plan funding is if additional contributions are being made, so certainly something that may come back in front of the city commission in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gary.
I make a motion to accept the audited financial statements of the city of Sault Ste. Marie for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2018, as presented by Anderson Tacman and Company, PLC.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Are there any questions? Just a comment, on behalf of the city commission, certainly like to thank Ken Tausma and his corporation certainly in doing the audit, and again, the city administration, city employees, taxpayers, it's a huge circle, everybody has to contribute, and certainly writing grants and being a recipient of some of those kind of grants certainly helps all, all the things that we try to do as a city and services that we try to provide, so. It's been a good year, and we look for a continuing good year in the, in the new year, so on behalf of the city, thank you very much, everybody.
I'd like to thank everybody at the city too for all their hard work in pulling all the information together, and we send a lot of things ahead of time to get pulled and looked at, and then too, we have to kind of use the element of surprise because of the rules of auditing and look at things, you know, not always the same things and move around, so everybody is very timely and very cooperative, and we appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and support. Any other questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Baker.
Yes.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes.
Commissioner Gary.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino.
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy.
Yes.
Mayor Bospas.
Yes. Motion carried, thank you. Thanks, Ken.
Item F, communications, one from Commissioner Baker, discussion regarding goal setting and budget session.
Okay, Commissioner Baker?
We can pull that off the agenda for tonight.
Okay, and that would just do, during the goal-setting, we'll have that recorded, and then it'll be put on the city's website after, for people that would like to at least look at that. And number two, thank you.
Item number two under communications is from Commissioner Gary, discussion on medical marijuana licensing research.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gary.
Included in your packet were several different articles and copies of the law in regard to medical marijuana, and over the last two meetings, we've discussed recreational marijuana at length, and, and we've had some discussions on medicinal marijuana as well. As we all know, the state has until December 6, 2019, to establish rules, and no licenses will be granted prior to recreational, prior for recreational. The Medical Marijuana Act was passed in 2008, and it made it legal for qualifying patients to possess and caregivers to grow. And the Medical Marijuana Facilities Licensing Act, which was passed by the Michigan Legislature in 2016 to license and regulate medical marijuana growers, processors, provisioning centers, transporters and safety compliance facilities, and to provide powers and duties to state and local government officers and entities, and that was passed in 2016. Subsequently, no rules were issued by the state, and emergency rules had to be created, which have a six-month expiration, so they're set to expire soon, so they could very well change. Through our discussions and input, I, I think it appears like we didn't dismiss the thought of medical marijuana, we opened to research the medical marijuana issues, and there was more support by electors. In 2008, the Medical Marijuana Act passed by 63 percent of the popular vote, 37 percent no. But then in 2018, the recreational vote was not quite as overwhelming, it only had 56 percent and 44 percent no. As you might have read in some of the articles, communities that have opted in have done years of research and on how it impacts their unique community, and I know that Sault Ste. Marie, Ontario has, has also worked on that, and they're and they're still at kind of an impasse on, on how the recreational will roll out. In the M M L guide, which I thought was very interesting, on medical marijuana facilities opt-in or opt-out, it points out that there are a lot of arguments that have been made in favor of opting in, but includes even stronger, longer section on cautions and why you should be skeptical. And for example, they had federal law issues, cost, control, safety and liability, just to name a few of them. This is one issue that's coming across America and it will require input from almost every department of the city. It's pretty amazing when you think about it, but every department and committee of the city will have to review this information. So it's, it's something that we talked about earlier. It can't be taken lightly and it, and it can't be rushed along. When you think of the departments, we're talking about the administration, the attorney, zoning, planning and development, police and fire, finance, building department, planning commission, and the list goes, and the city commission, and the list goes on and on. And we establish goals every year and we pass those goals and the city administration works on those goals. And in addition, at certain times, we have other initiatives that come up. And this year, the rental property initiative has come up, the M E D C application, I think, for the big projects downtown and of course, the Carby Dock. And so some of those things add to the administrative work burden and of course, the entire city work burden. We also have federal issues with a new attorney general. We don't know how he or she will interpret the law and whether they will enforce it. As the articles have all said, there's no deadline for us to opt in and, and only a hundred and eighty of the seventeen hundred communities within Michigan have at this point. So I think we all kind of are looking for some more information. So I just wanted to bring this information to the commission, review it. I think in the last two agenda items that we've had on marijuana, there were over twenty-six articles and some were repeats, but there's, there are hundreds and hundreds and even thousands of pages of information that has to be gleaned through. So, Mr. Mayor, what I'd like to do is make a motion that we refer medical marijuana facility licensing to our city administration to review state law, monitor rules, research peer communities' best practices and require a report due to the commission no later than December sixth, two thousand and nineteen. And to provide us quarterly updates to the commission via the manager, city manager updates that he gives us so that we can monitor progress.
Support.
It's been moved forward. Any discussion? Commissioner Torrey.
Thank you. I, when Don told me he was putting this on the agenda, I was, I was curious to see what he was, he was going to say, but I can tell you over the last, even just since the last couple of meetings in meeting people out in our community and a lot of discussion, there's so much confusion with what is legal, what's not legal, what can people do, where can they do it? I think that it just shows cautious leadership by sending it back for a lot of research, a lot of looking into it. This law is not going anywhere and, you know, I think it is a wave of the future for the country. So I commend Commissioner Gary for, again, all of his research, his thorough presentations and I also am in support of this.
City Manager, you have any comments?
Certainly administration will work with every effort to meet this, this motion if it passes by the city commission and we look forward to performing that work.
Okay, any other questions? We have a motion and support. Roll call, please.
Sorry, just a second. Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrey?
Yes.
Mayor Vospos?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Item number three is from Chippewa County Community Foundation Youth Advisory Committee, Veterans Banner Initiative.
Okay, who's presenting? Commissioner, Commissioner, if you're going to present, you should probably.
Yeah, I was just going to excuse myself and I'm saying.
Okay, I know you're, you're part of the.
Okay, I'm hoping not to do much talking tonight and let the kids talk, but I'm just going to give you.
Debbie, if you'd introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry, Debbie Jones, and I'm the executive director of the Chippewa County Community Foundation. And I'm just going to give you just a real quick history of youth advisory council, or it's called YAC. And back in nineteen ninety-nine, the community foundation received quite a bit of money from the Kellogg Foundation to start what's called the YAC, Youth Advisory Council. And the purpose of that is for teaching, to make grants to projects in the, in the community that affect youth. And the students get the opportunity to learn a lot about philanthropy, about service work and about grant making. We have at the community foundation, an endowment fund that has a value of about four hundred thousand dollars. We work with about twenty thousand annually to impact our community. And so for the last five years, as I was the director of the execu, or of the community foundation, I did run the YAC program as just another one of my functions, but it just, it was time that we brought it to the next level. So a month ago, we did hire Commissioner Baker, Abby Baker, as our youth advisory council leader. I had a new hashtag that was hashtag the speed of Abby, but the kids told me that they also have that same hashtag going because things have moved very, very quickly with our YAC program, and I'm very excited about where it's going because not only is it active at Sioux High, but now it's going to be active at Malcolm High School, at Brimley High School. Hopefully, we're going to be going into the Pickford High School. There was, there's a YAC at Rudyard that's going to get even more funding available to work too. So really some great things are happening really quickly with our YAC under the leadership of Commissioner Baker. So one of the things that we started two years ago with our YAC students is to take a service learning trip. And it's a unique opportunity for these students to see another, really another world, another culture, to realize that the world is a lot bigger than just Sault Ste. Marie. Two years ago, we went to Guatemala. I took sixteen kids to Guatemala on a service learning trip and we worked at a school. It was very eye-opening for them. Their school system is absolutely nothing like our school system. And this past summer, in June, I took students to the Dominican Republic. Dominican Republic in June is very hot. And the students, we, that was a great trip. We built homes out of recycled bottles, plastic, and the kids worked so, so hard. We slept with nets around us because we had cockroaches and spiders. So the kids learn a tremendous amount. So this year, the kids are starting to plan their trip and it looks like it's probably going to be maybe Tanzania, Tanzania with a water filtration project. These trips are not cheap. They're about two thousand to twenty-five hundred dollars per student. The students have to raise all of their own money to go on these trips. Nothing comes from our endowment fund, nothing comes from the community foundation's budget. It's all self-funded through fundraising activities. So it started as a fundraising activity for our service learning trip that Abby's going to take the kids on this year, which is good because I'm getting too old to do that. It, it's morphed into something much bigger than just a fundraising trip. And I am, I am so excited about this. And, and as the kids talk about it, please know that we don't have a hundred percent of the answers yet, okay? We do need some approval, we need some endorsements from you, and we don't have every single logistic worked out. We're trying to move this project along quickly so that we have, if people want to participate in this Veterans Banner program and recognize a veteran in their life, they could do that like as a Christmas present. So we kind of are trying to move this along quickly. And I have to first thank this, the community service board and Mark Miners and Dan Wires for pulling together a, kind of a quick community service board meeting that happened at six o'clock tonight. And we got the, the approval to move forward with this. And so now we need to take it to this next level. I'm not going to tell you too much more about it because I really want the kids to talk about what it is, but, and I don't know if the people at home can see, can we hold up the, there's, there's a banner here that Commissioner Talantino's, I think, I think that one is worth noting for the people at home to see that we've used Commissioner Talantino when he was, what'd you say, seventeen years old and entered into the Marines. So this is a, I think it's, it's such a win-win-win-win project for everybody. There's just so many benefits to it, but, so as you ask questions, and I hope you do, we may have the answers. We may say we don't have the answers yet, but we're going to work on it. And we certainly want to take some feedback. At our community service commission, or community service board meeting earlier today, we had some good feedback from the participants, things maybe we hadn't thought about, like if, if a veteran is still alive, say Commissioner Talantino, we might need to get your approval before we hang a banner up. So something like that, that we hadn't thought about. So we, we certainly want the feedback, but we're hoping to get your approval and your endorsement so that we can continue to move forward with this. So at that, I'm going to have each of the kids introduce themselves. And then I believe Kayla is going to be, so maybe she'll do it last, introduce herself, but she's going to talk about the program. But we're, we'll start over here with Isabel.
My name is Isabel Perrin and I'm a senior at Suaria High School.
Hello, my name is Danielle Price. I'm also a senior at Suaria High School.
Hello, my name is Triton Johnson. I'm also a senior at Sioux High.
I'm Emily McAcney and I'm also a senior.
Hi, I'm Kayla Wilhams. I'm also a senior from the local Sioux High YAC group. We aren't just a group of seniors, there are juniors involved as well. We try to bring as many people as we can into our group, just to make it a nice diverse group. We're here today to essentially pitch you the Veterans Banner idea we came up with, which we think would be a huge benefit to our community in many ways while raising money for our service trip that we would like to take. We're, we are pushing for Tanzania, as Deb has explained, and we would be actively involved with our elementary school, helping their students and with this water filtration system, which we think would be an amazing thing to do. What we are doing, we would like to commemorate the many veterans from all the branches that are from our very own community and creating and displaying unique banners that feature them. Each banner would display an image of the veteran, branch of service, year served and honors received, if any. These are the example banners you can see. The banners would then be displayed around the community on lamp posts to line our city streets. Our plan is to sell each of these banners for a hundred and seventy-five dollars each, which would cover the fifty dollars, fifty dollars to produce and the brackets fifty dollars to purchase and the remaining seventy-five to go towards our group. And also, an idea that came towards us was also giving back money to our, to our veterans. And so if we do exceed the amount that we need, we would love to give back to our veterans as a thank you. Our plan, we have been reaching out for volunteers and we have met with Cloverland twice and they're very supportive, but have a banner policy as well. And we hope to meet with them the first week of January to get a decision, but they're in huge support, just a matter of making it work. Also, D T E was supportive with assisting us with their volunteers as we met with them as well. We also met with the Bay Mills Tribe and the Sioux Tribe and they're very supportive. Sioux Tribe even gave us, opened a, showed us a grant that we could apply for, the Quaiden Cares, yeah, the Quaiden Cares Grant, which is a lot of money that can help save us money. So I think we have, we have a website here we'd like to show you. Okay, so this website was made through a volunteer, which is great, saving us money. It is fully ready to go. It has a form, this is a form. If you were to purchase a banner, this is what you'd fill out. It shows your email address. Your bio, branch, any tribal affiliation and where you'd like it displayed, as we have YAC groups, not only in the Sioux, but we have them in Brimley, Rudyard and Pickford, which Abby's also advising. So we would have those displayed, commemorating all of them and the purchase price at the ends. We also have, this idea is kind of snowballing and we created, we had an idea of Q R codes and which you guys have in front of you, example one. And if you were to put your phone up to it right now, you could just put your phone, your camera on it and then you'd slide up and it'd bring you to, yeah, to this website. And on the website, there, there will be like bios of each banner. So if you wanted to now, you could. And then these are the, like a video that would.
You got them all. Thanks. You have to have a, you have to have an iPhone?
What?
You have to have an iPhone or any phone?
Yeah, any phone should work.
And what will happen is, once you scan it, right at the top of your screen, a drop-down box will come for a webpage and click on that and it'll bring you to this page.
Okay.
Uh, probably, yeah. And also with this Q R code, it would be, so if you're walking by, you could go straight up to it. So it'd be in the lower part of the pole where you could do it. And it, we want to make it maybe as a design, like a freight or something, just to make it look nice. So that's something we're working towards right now. And this video that we're about to play is for the John Quinn poster.
John Quinn was born in eighteen ninety-two in Canada. He married his wife Eva Jacques and had five children. He was a baker all of his life at his brother's bakery, which is located where Austin Oaks is today. It was once called Quinn's Bakery. He served in World War One from nineteen fourteen to nineteen eighteen in the Army. He died in nineteen sixty-five here in Sault Ste. Marie. You can read John's letters to his wife Eva that are on display at the Sioux Historical Society located at one fifteen Ashman Street. The fifteen letters written while he was away at World War One turned a hundred years old on December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
So our slogan behind this is history of hometown heroes told by hometown heroes. This video right now was spoken by Abby, just because we didn't have time. But we, the essential idea is to have the students, the YAC students, be the ones speaking about these veterans so that it would be like a nice involvement. And also with tourism, how you could create, this could be a huge tourist attraction with the whole idea of interactive history and being able to go around the city and how in that video, it described going back to the historical society. And so then you could, it gives the exact address and you could go there and maybe read those letters that it describes. Yeah, just, there's another video we have for the other poster.
For those that know Sharon Jones, which I think a lot of you do, this is actually Sharon Jones, which was five years old with her father, who was at Pearl Harbor when he was bombed, or when he was bombed, when it was bombed, he was a bomb. But, and this is read by Sharon.
John W. Burt was born in Sault Ste. Marie, Michigan on January seventeenth, nineteen fourteen, the oldest of thirteen children. He is pictured here with his daughter Sharon while he was home on furlough in nineteen forty-three. His wife Pearl Wise Burt passed away in nineteen thirty-eight during childbirth and subsequently, he enlisted in the U.S. Marine Corps in nineteen thirty-nine. He was assigned to the Third Defense Battalion Marine Fleet Force in nineteen forty and was stationed at Pearl Harbor when the Japanese attacked in nineteen forty-one. From August until December of nineteen forty-two, he participated in the landing assaults on the British Solomon Islands. As a result of these successful battles, he was given a citation from the President of the United States for demonstrating outstanding gallantry and determination in successfully executing force landing assaults against a number of strongly defended Japanese positions on Toluji, Givutu, Caninvogo, Florida and Guadalcanal, completely routing all the enemy forces and seizing a most valuable base and airfield within the enemy zone of operations in the South Pacific Ocean. In December of nineteen forty-three, he was transferred to the First School Communication Signal Battalion in California, where he completed training and was promoted to. Signal Battalion in California, where he completed training and was promoted to Tech Sergeant Communication. This began a lifelong interest in the operation and use of ham radios. In July of nineteen forty-four, he was promoted to Master Technical Sergeant. He was transported back to the active battles on the islands of Timian, Guam, and Peluloo in the Pacific Sea Year aboard the ship General E.T. Collins as a radio chief. He remained in the South Pacific area until the end of the war, and returned to the United States on the destroyer USS Walke in October of nineteen forty-five. Upon returning to civilian life, he married Margaret Simonson from New Zealand, and had three children, Catherine, Roy, and Tony. They settled in Burlington, Washington, where he utilized the training he received in the Marine Corps, opening his own business, Ducap Electronics. He was an active member of the Pearl Harbor Survivors Association and served on the Civil Service Commission of the City of Burlington. He passed away in Burlington, Washington on April twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-five.
So this idea has kind of expanded a lot from just a banner program to something much bigger. And with this QR code as well expanding, we believe we could create an app ourselves, which is free, I believe, and if other cities would like to mimic this, they could download our app, and then it would bring us, it'd bring them right back to the idea that Sault Ste. Marie created this. It'd be such a big impact, I believe. And so our goal is to have a launch date of Memorial Day, twenty nineteen, hanging them year-round for about three years, as that seems to be a banner's lifespan. Um, thanks to CCCF, they said any weathering damage, such as a snowstorm or something, that were to happen, they would love to replace it with their money. So, so the banners would still look nice, because we don't want a bad banner hanging up, representing our veterans. We're exploring the possibility of working with the Su-Hi Welding Class and Mr. Rambo for student-made brackets, which would be, which would be great, as more students would then be involved, and it would be saving us a lot of money from buying the brackets, which are pretty expensive. We want to do this because it creates many benefits to our community. As a community, we would be showing support to our veterans of the past, present, and future, giving us the freedoms and liberties we enjoy, and who at least, I believe, don't get too much attention when they really should, because they do such a great thing for us. This would add beautification to the city, create placemaking by our idea of putting maybe the Coast Guard banners and the Coast Guard place, and their area, and the Army, and the Army, and then just like creating placemaking, so you know where to go. Attract tourism with an interactive history lesson within our city. Create an opportunity to get kids involved with great projects like this, rather than, rather than other things, and hopefully some, something other cities would like to mimic for their community. Any questions, concerns? I'm sure there are many.
And again, it's not a, it's not a city function, it's a Chippewa County Foundation Yak function. Abby Baker is Abby Baker when she's with you, when she's with, behind the table, she's Commissioner Baker. So it's, we don't want, because we've had other problems before, people have a lot of expectation when the city gets involved, and we had folks having housing programs on their own, and it wasn't so that, this is strictly Abby, Commissioner Baker, Abby Baker, helping you do your thing, and I, I think, I speak for the commission, it's, I think it's a, it's a great project. There's certain steps that you're gonna find that you're gonna have to do in order to be really successful, but just hearing the information on the, on the tool you've provided, there's a lot, there's a lot ahead of you. And, and, and I'm certainly not, not anywhere near being a computer and, and all the media outlet literate type of thing, but when you hear that, there's some real possibilities. I don't know if the city logo should be on something that you're doing. Uh, it's nice that you involve the city. Um, you know, we're the oldest city settlement in the Midwest, so it's, and we have a lot of veterans organizations here in this, in this whole three-county area. Heavily involved in, in different wars and, and a lot of folks that have passed on. It's tremendous, tremendous opportunity for you. Commissioner Twardy.
Thank you. Yeah, I always say whenever you want to get great ideas, you always put kids in charge of it, because you guys are always the most creative. I do mimic, and they know, I, I said this in the Community Services Board meeting, I am very concerned about the City of Sault Ste. Marie logo being on anything. Uh, because this is a self-pay banner project. You don't want people to think that they were left out of something by the city. So I think that we have to be very careful there. Um, but I, I like the banner program. Um, you know, I, I think that anytime you guys can learn philanthropy and especially like going around the world, seeing other areas of the world, it really, it broadens your eyes to how lucky we are here at home. So kudos to you for that. So I, I would be in support of this program. I'm, I am concerned about placement. I'm concerned about, um, you know, in the DDA, because the, the DDA is, is the downtown business owners. So we have to be very careful that we're doing what the downtown business owners want to do. And, um, so speaking on behalf of Justin Nepper, saying that when he hasn't received input from the downtown business owners, which I, I own several, so, um, you know, so we have to be very careful there and not saying that that's where they will be.
Abby?
Um, I, just to comment on that, we had planned on presenting at the DDA meeting last Wednesday, but then it got rescheduled for this Wednesday, so we will be bringing it before the DDA this Wednesday. And speaking with Nepper, we, they don't have, they have intentions on a banner program for restaurant banners and such, but, um, none have been purchased. There's gonna be some time in there, and, um, we would utilize every other poll, so to speak, or whatever, basically whatever it boils down to, whatever they allow, whatever Nepper allows us and says, "We have ten polls downtown you can use," that's how many we have downtown. Um, the purpose of the downtown tour is a virtual, hands-on, interactive history lesson of our community told through our local vets. We're working with Susan Puska, who is originally from here, but she works for the government in Veteran Affairs. She's been taking Vietnam stories from local vets, and we got in touch with her. She has amazing information to share with us. We've already gotten four or five emails of Vietnam vets. So, uh, working with her, along with the DDA, and all of the other entities together, this could be a, a project that really puts us on the map.
Yeah, I guess a question I have is, uh, someone that can't afford the hundred and seventy dollars? Uh, I mean, a lot of family veterans, you know, is there, is there, I know, is there some kind of a mechanism that would be, they would be taken care of, especially if they passed away?
Yeah, so we were thinking if we were to have, um, going through the polls and finding out how many we could have, we would put aside maybe like twenty, twenty-five, where we, our group would fundraise for those people that maybe can't afford it. And then we would help them, and we'd put their banner up as well.
And that's gonna take some research on, on your part.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, you know, Lake State has banners that they need up, because that's, uh, Lake State is, uh, you know, trying to make sure people understand where they're, where they're at. So, um, banners have all kinds of, um, reasons for hanging, you know? So it's a matter of coordinating all of that. So it's, it's not an, it's not an easy project, but it's a tremendous opportunity. And I, I don't know how many polls we have in the community, how many are available, how many aren't, so, um, what do you need from, from the commission tonight? What are you, what are you asking, I guess?
We need permission to put them on city polls. Um, we're working with Cloverland, we've had two meetings with them. We're hoping to meet with them the first week of January. As you know, um, they're looking on hiring their new CEO. They'll be doing that that first week. Hopefully, we can jump on that same meeting and get it approved through them as well. Um, but we'd like to start with the city polls, and we just need your approval to put them on. We've done, these banners, um, here that you can see are to the specs that, of the city's banner policy, so they're two by four, essentially. However, as we were discussing at the Community Services Board meeting, the blue lamp posts downtown are much smaller than
Yes.
a huge telephone pole. So we would have to do a smaller version on those bluer ones to, otherwise it would take up half the, so we're, we're gonna make sure that we get approval from the DDA and everything before we come back and hang up. We just need the approval from you guys to, uh, start working with them on that and figuring out where, how many, and what we're allowed to sell, so we can, the biggest reason we're pushing through this is because it's the holiday season, and it's the end of fiscal year for a lot of people, and these are great Christmas gifts, uh, for your loved ones, so we could start, uh, selling them, and again, they wouldn't be hung till May, uh, for Memorial Weekend Lodge.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Gary?
I'm assuming the planning or, uh, Community Services Board passed it. And then also, uh, just a question, under the banner policy, it says the city manager has discretion to approve all the graphic designs, uh, determine placement, and approve the placement of the banners, so I'm assuming we're following that guideline directly.
City manager?
Uh, thank you for that question, Commissioner. That would be correct. The motion in front of the city commission would be to approve the request submitted by the Foundation Youth Advisory Committee, subject to the administrative discretion of the city manager. And so because of the scope of the project, uh, the banner policy isn't necessarily a one-hundred percent natural fit, but, uh, that motion does comport with a similar thought process, which is that it would be subject to the discretion of the city manager.
Anyone else? Commissioner Talantino?
Uh, as Kathy, or as Commissioner Twardy stated, I think this is a great program. I think this is gonna be something that's gonna be really cool and really neat to the community. Uh, as a living veteran, uh, the only thing that, and this is me, this is a concern that I have, I just kind of wish Yak would do something in the United States. You know, I realize everybody wants to go ahead and see the world like that seventeen-year-old kid did down there on the floor, but I think there's a lot of cool things you could do in the States, okay? And I think veterans will, would appreciate that, okay? Just food for thought for the future, okay?
And we, we will be doing other, we have a whole list of local community fundraising projects that we're gonna be integrating with other local organizations that we can donate to throughout the year. So all, throughout all the fundraising that we do, a portion will go to the kids in their trip, but a lot of it's gonna go back to the community.
Just to address that, Tim, Commissioner Talantino, this is, the service trip is just one of the service projects that the Yak students do. We've done many things from, um, uh, doing a clothing drive for the Diane Pepler Resource Center. The kids have served lunch at the Soup Kitchen, they prepared, um, or like did all the Christmas wrapping for them. We did a toiletry drive for the homeless teen program. The kids just on Sunday adopted a family, a Christmas, for Christmas. Uh, so the service trip is one aspect, one piece of all of the service work that the students do, and it really is to create, we live in a global world now. Many of these kids, um, probably will be serving, working in another country at some point. So it's, it's just to really give them a very, um, broad appreciation of what service work can be like, and what it, what it looks like and feels like in other countries. So there, there's plenty of other local service work that's done by the students.
Commissioner, uh, I'm sorry.
When, when you actually make the banners, do they, are they one at a time, or do you have to have so many ordered for them to start the run?
Well, it's cheaper to get, um, like a massive order, so we'd plan to make, get all of our applications in, and then make that big order.
So the reason I ask is that, obviously, we talked about our logo not being on there, but on the other side, there might be somebody that would pay to have their logo on there, right? Because like you have four logos on there right now?
Yeah.
So is it, is it a possibility that you could do some sort of advertising on the bottom for like a local restaurant or somebody? And then you could use that same app, right?
Well, I, I like where you're going with this, because we've, we've thought of that. Um, so the reason why we chose the four on the, um, Mr. Mendelskine's banner there is because we need the city's approval for, you know, putting them on there. And from a PR standpoint, and with this integrative tourist history lesson, um, I just, from a PR standpoint, I thought that the city, tribe, and Cloverland would all want to be recognized for making this happen. Um, the tribe, like Kayla had said, pointed us in the direction of the Quaidan Cares. We've applied for a twenty-five thousand dollar grant. They do want their logo on there, so we have no problem, um, putting that on there. If the city has an issue with it, we have no problem taking it off either. We were just doing it, because it was a partnership. Now where the other local businesses will come in is on our website, we'll sell advertisement to those local businesses. And then, um, I don't know much about it, but I'm learning quickly from my son and these kids, um, the Geocash and the Pokemon Go, and how they hide treasures within these QR codes. So with purchasing advertisement on our website, you as a business would be able to in, input a, embed a code within a code, so to speak. And so every tenth scan on a poll, it's, "You just won a free coffee at Bird's Eye," or "You got ten percent off at Harmony Health Food." And you can direct the tourists, um, kind of like how it, with the history museum there, if we lent those letters on, and you can direct them there, or to the River Museum, or to the Tower of History. So again, you're getting that local tourist, um, attractive, integrative, with, a whole family could do this, everybody's got phones, um, and again, it's told through our local vets and through our students. So like Debbie said, it's a win-win-win-win-win everywhere, um, in my opinion. There's definitely kinks to work out, um, and by brainstorming and having these conversations, it helps us and it'll guide us, and before we hang them or do, we can always come back again, but we just really need the approval to, that you will allow us to put them on the polls, and we will start selling them, and then we'll work out all the logistics in the next five months before May.
Any other questions? Let's go, Commissioner Talantino. I'm sure we have a picture out there.
Where would you like to do this?
Pending city commission authorization and discussion, uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request submitted by the Chippewa County Foundation Youth Advisory Committee, subject to administrative discretion of the city manager.
Support?
It's been moved, supported. Questions? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Twardy?
Yes.
Mayor Basma?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
No, she.
Abstain.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Good luck. Okay, item number G is the city manager's report. We just give them a chance to, uh, you, you folks can, uh, you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting if you don't like. Thanks for coming. No. Thank you. Okay, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Item A, under the city manager's report, would provide for the award of a bid for the purchase of a new ambulance. On this matter, Chief Labani will present to the commission.
Okay. Evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and commission. Uh, as you're all aware, on June fourth of this year, the commission approved for the application of funding through the USDA, uh, which was soon after won, uh, with eighty-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars earmarked towards the purchase of a new ambulance. Since receiving word about the grant award, a great amount of research was put into supplying a spec for a Type One ambulance, which the department has never operated. The reason for switching, uh, from a Type Three ambulance, which is currently in use by the department, to a Type One, uh, mainly due to manufacturers no longer supplying chassis for the Type Three ambulance, or the cutaway chassis. The other reasons for this are the amount of room in the patient compartment, uh, and many other reasons. Lastly, uh, another big reason to switch to this type of chassis would be the ability to have a, a four-wheel-drive ambulance, would be the first one that our department's ever had, uh, which can prove to be quite a, a huge improvement, uh, just due to getting stuck in snow, and some of the alleys and, and whatnot in town. As I'm sure you've noticed, new ambulances have become, have become more expensive. Reasons for the increased, uh, cost in ambulances across the board compared to the last time , uh, city bids were sought are many. Type One ambulances are consistently higher in price due to being, due to having a more expensive chassis with upgraded suspension and squatting features, which means, uh, when the ambulance gets to wherever its call is, the, the suspension actually lowers down so they can get the cot out of the back. Not only that, uh, but some of the, the bigger prices have to do with updated federal DOT safety standards, which mean more lights. standards, which mean more lights, more decals and whatnot. And finally, the newer diesel admissions with the addition of the award diesel filtration system. On November 7th, 2018, a bid opening was held at the city clerk's office for a type 1 ambulance for the fire department. Three vendors submitted bids with a total of three ambulances for consideration. The bids ranged from custom-built units to the basic, very, very basic entry-level ambulances. It's no surprise that none of the ambulance bids were exactly to department specifications since technology and safety updates so quickly, even from just last year, making our old spec obsolete. The highest bid came in at $257,936.57 for a 2019 wheel coach, and the lowest bid submitted was for $218,464 for a 2019 stock ambulance, which actually strayed quite a bit from what the department advertised. There were options for upgrading, however, those price options were never included in the bid. Over the years, the fire department's had a lot of experience in knowing which brands work in the UP climate and which brands don't hold up, so this is also a factor in making the decision. The remaining bid, or what we call bid number two, was for $248,580. It's not the cheapest quote submitted, but it's also not the most expensive. That bid came in from R&amp;R Fire Truck Repair out of Northville, Michigan, for a custom-built to-order type 1 Lifeline ambulance on a 2019 F-450 chassis with a diesel engine. For what it's worth, this is the same company we purchased our last ambulance from, and we've been very, very happy with it. Lifeline's bid included build specs, which meet, which met or exceeded the departmental specs advertised. The warranties for the Lifeline ambulance include five-year, 60,000-mile warranties for the conversion, a 10-year, 100,000-mile warranty for minor and major electrical problems, not to mention excellent warranties for paint and hardware. Like the city's last ambulance purchase, one of the most appealing factors for choosing this vendor is the fire department has been satisfactorily utilizing R&amp;R Fire Truck Repair for all of our fire truck maintenance and repair services. And again, they've done a fantastic job with that. It's good to have somebody that we trust to be able to come in and do the work that's needed on these ambulances. Without a doubt, the custom-built Lifeline ambulance from R&amp;R Fire Truck Repair will serve the city through St. Marie in the safest and most cost-efficient manner while causing the first, fewest amount of breakdowns in the long run. Lastly, it should be noted, the update, the updated local match is an increase of $9,800 over the contribution from the Gaming Fund, approved at the September 4th meeting. More options are being explored to assist in covering the matching funds, however, in the meantime, the remaining balance will have to be funded from the Gaming Fund. I just also want to add lastly, that part of this, of this price for this ambulance also includes a $14,000 electric hydraulic cot, so, which we did have budgeted out of a separate budget, so we can actually eliminate that, that cost from the other budget line. In order to approve this, I believe two motions are going to be needed. The first one would be a budget revision in the amount of $9,800 from the Gaming Fund, and the second would be for the purchase of the ambulance from R&amp;R Fire Truck Repair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Sean. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that presentation, Chief. Just a few notes, I know that the fire department and fire chief has put a significant level of research into this purchase, the purchase that would best serve patients. And as the chief mentioned, for example, the hydraulic cot, a number of features inside of the ambulance, which help render excellent care. I appreciate the opportunity from the USDA grant in excess of $80,000 to defray approximately 30 to 35% of the costs. And with the fleet being modernized within the past two to three years, we've seen a decrease in our maintenance costs, which is positive for the general fund budget.
Excellent. I see you mentioned USDA. Commissioner Gary?
Question for the city attorney, since the company I work for, USDA, has provided some of the grant funds for the purchase of this ambulance, and I had to abstain from that transaction, do I need to abstain from this?
I think you should abstain on all sides of the transaction.
Thank you.
Commissioner Torri?
Thank you. I just have a question and then I'd like to make a motion. So I don't know if this question is for the chief or for the city manager. Are we just increasing our stock, or what is to be done with, are we cycling in a new ambulance and then cycling out and selling an old ambulance?
I would defer to the chief. I know the answer, but he's very eloquent.
No problem. There is a trade-in included with this deal, so we would be getting, we would be rolling stock through.
Okay. Thank you. And one more note about the $14,000 hydraulic cot. Not only does it make it more comfortable for the patients, but it protects our employees.
Absolutely.
Because I know that they really assist with lifting.
Absolutely. A lot of, lot of back injuries will be saved with that.
Correct, yeah. That being said, I would like to make a motion to approve a budget revision of an additional $9,800 for a total local contribution of $160,000 from the Gaming Fund.
Support.
Support.
It's been moved supported. Are there any questions? A rule call, please.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Basmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Motion carried. Commissioner Torri?
I'd like to make a motion to award a bid for a new type 1 ambulance to R&amp;R Fire Truck Repair for a 2019 Lifeline ambulance in the amount of $241,758.
Support.
It's been moved supported. Are there any questions? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Basmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item two, under the city manager's report, would provide for the award of a bid for audiovisual equipment for the city commission chambers. On this matter, IT Director Raffaele will join us at the podium.
I'm never out here. Sheesh. I don't like being out here. I like being back there. Okay, so for the last couple of years, the city commission audio/video equipment has become unstable. Sometimes I can't turn it on, sometimes it doesn't record, and I'm back there panicking. The current equipment was purchased around 2009, 2010. The equipment was top, the top of the top, then it actually is equipment that you would use in an actual recording studio. So I mean, it was top-line stuff, so. It's been on my radar for Capitol Project. This is my last Capitol Project for a long time, but, so in August of 2018, I knew what I wanted for equipment, but I didn't know how to put it all together. So I decided to meet with a consultant, and he wrote up the specs and everything, though he came here and informed us on what we needed. Some of the things that we'll get is replace all these cameras in here to high-definition cameras, because these are not high-def cameras. Change the cabling here to an HDMI instead of the old, ancient VGA cables. I will have control over the microphones. Currently, right now, I have no control over mics. So if Commissioner Talantino speaks louder than Commissioner Torri, I can't tweak it. And with this new equipment, I'll be able to do that, so.
Wait a minute. I want to control the mics.
You know, I can't wait to go mute, mute, mute. You won't see me poking my head around the corner going, "Somebody's got their mic on."
No, I'm just kidding.
And actually, with this new equipment, I can run it from, from the back with an iPad if I wanted to sit out here and, and, and control it. But the, really the big part of it all, yeah, we're going to get better, high-quality, nice picture equipment, but it, the time that it takes me to edit the video and get it all put together, and then into one big file, and then get it up on YouTube, every commission meeting, depending on how long the commission meeting is, it can take anywhere from three to six hours for me to edit. With the new, we're going to be live streaming on YouTube, for one thing, so you'll have cable and, and the live streaming on the internet. And it's, it's supposed to record right to the internet. So you're taking away those three to six hours that I spend not answering my phone, editing video for the meeting. So that's, that's a huge thing for me, is, is that part of it, other than the nice quality picture and everything we'll get. But anyways, an RFP was posted on the city web, on webpage, and bids were opened on November 26, 2018. We had two bids come in. The lowest bid was ASG in the amount of $59,985. So it is my recommendation that the, you authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with ASG in the amount of $59,985 for audiovisual equipment for the city commission chambers as presented.
Okay. Any questions?
Hi, Dad.
City Manager?
You told me to say that.
I know that Director Raffaele touched on this, the significant level of savings in staff time. We anticipate over the lifetime of this equipment, that the value would approximate the cost of the equipment. So there's certainly a return. And I know that the improvements that the director has put into place, this is a department, the IT department, used to have two and a half positions, and now it's Director Raffaele. So certainly, these kind of improvements help the organization overall. And of course, with this providing public access information.
I promised I would build the network so it would be easy for one person to, to take care of, and then I'll retire. And this is my last piece.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm excited for this. Lots of public comment of how live streaming and why we weren't there yet, so it's, I'm really excited for it. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with ASG in the amount of $59,985 for audiovisual equipment for the city commission chambers as presented.
Support.
It's been moved supported. Are there any questions? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Basmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you. And you know what I'll be doing tomorrow for a few hours.
Item three, under the city manager's report, would provide authorization to waive the bidding process and extend 2018 contract prices for 2019 pavement marking activities. On this matter, City Engineer Basista.
Evening, Linda.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Got turned off. Okay. PK Contracting sent us a letter last month indicating that they'd be willing to hold their bid prices from last year's for our annual pavement marking contract. PK Contracting has been the sole bidder for the last couple of years, and their 2017 prices were, or 2018 prices were good, and, and so in anticipation of a possible rate increase, I'd like to, for you to consider waiving the bidding process for the 2019 annual pavement markings and allow us to execute a contract with PK Contracting, holding their bid prices from the 2018 contract.
Any questions? City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item, as is customary with this type of situation, in which to waive the bidding process, unanimous consent must be obtained from the city commission upon the recommendation of the city manager, and as City Engineer has indicated, would not be beneficial to obtain sealed bids due to the fact that there are anticipated cost increases, combined with the lack of previous bidders, and the experience of the company as well as the price-holding for 2018 price levels. Would be my recommendation that the city commission waive the sealed bid requirement in this instance. Thank you.
Okay, so there's two motions. Let's go to Commissioner Gary.
I make a motion to waive the sealed bid requirement and authorize the city manager to enter into a contract.
No, I'd, to, we need two bids, yeah. Just to waive this.
I make a motion to waive the sealed bid requirement.
Support.
It's been moved in support. Are there any questions? Rule call, please.
Mayor Basmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Motion to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with PK Contracting using unit pricing from their 2018 contract.
Support.
It's been moved supported. Questions? Rule call, please.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Basmas?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item four, under the city manager's report, would provide approval for the Anny Osbourne Campground amended budget, the 2019 rate schedule, and the reservation system agreement. On this matter, Director Wires will present to the city commission.
Keeps passing the buck, but.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. A new, for the Anny Osbourne Campground, a new online reservation system was researched and selected. The My Sites program through mobilerveen.com is a very robust reservation system that will provide seamless integration with our currently utilized PSN Financial Gateway and the city financial system software, Clarity, which is through our finance department. Most importantly, the public will have the ability for the first time to book a site online and on a first-come, first-served basis, have the ability to book a popular waterfront site months prior to the actual visit. This new reservation system is also being utilized by the City of Petoskey and the City of Hancock. Both of these communities were contacted directly and vetted. They are thrilled to be utilizing the software and have mentioned that it has provided efficiencies and streamlined their own municipal operations as well. The professional services vendor was selected from detailed research and reputation to the campground and recreational vehicle community. One of our overall goals was to establish improved controls at the Anny Osbourne Campground, and the online reservation system provides this. The recreation coordinator will begin working immediately with assisting campers with reservations and preparing the park to open this spring. This is, with us taking on this operation, is very, very important to us, and we do not want to miss one step in this process. Now, some of the commissioners may comment about the reservation program with the City of Petoskey and City of Hancock utilizing the software, and with them being extremely happy with it. It's one of these where it was selected as a professional service through detailed research, and both these folks are very excited going into another year utilizing this. The people at My Sites have been extremely helpful to work with. Currently, we have a minimum of two weeks' startup to set up the system. It is in the, it is in the process, and we're actually meeting on Wednesday with the folks, conference call in finance department with the folks at the PSN. And the PSN is who works with the city now in our finance department for credit card payments here at City Hall as well. So this would be set up to be seamless. Also attached is an amendment to the budget that provides additional cost center items to the general operational budget as we proceed with a partial operating year with the campground opening date of May 15. And that's where we're basically saying from approximately the 1st of January right through till June 30, that's six months, half a year. So we're, we're going to start by hitting the ground running. You did get a chance to see a partial budget for that amendment for this coming year. Finally attached is a 2019 rate sheet that provides the detail for campground fees, reservation fees, as well as reservation policy and cancellation fee and policy. The new online reservation credit card fee of $8 will serve to cover the cost to the city for the reservation software, as well as the PSN Financial Gateway transaction fees. $8 is, is very common in reservation systems. One other item that we have on the form that you folks did get is that we offer the discount for the walk-in cash customers. So that is something that we feel very strongly about, so if there are local cash-paying customers want to come in and take care of it that way. We're excited to get this project going, getting it underway, and if there's any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Torri?
Thank you. So, so you're saying the online reservation fee is going to offset this $8,300 eventually, or what is it that you're saying?
The eight, the $8 fee?
Yeah.
If I get to, to answer it correctly, Commissioner? If I get the, uh, to answer it correctly, Commissioner, the eight dollar fee, um, there's a three dollar fee that is for the My Sites, for the software, uh, that we would end up paying. So then the rest of that money with that eight dollars would pay the PSN fee. Um, and that could range, that's what we're still to, working on. So it would fit that within that five dollars.
Okay.
And some may be more, some may be less, depending if somebody signs up for ninety days.
Okay. So is this eighty-three hundred dollars then? Is that an annual fee to RVing.com or?
Eighty-three hundred.
Well, because I see a dollar amount for eighty-three hundred, correct?
On the My Sites?
Uh, well, that's what we're, that's what the budgeted source is tonight, or the, the dollar amount being requested. That's what it says right here in our agenda. Eighty-three hundred dollars is the dollar amount. It's not budgeted and then saying that it's going to come from the city general fund.
No. I don't know what that is.
Mindset? Oh, fifty-eight thousand. Oh, I thought that was a dollar sign. See, I need my glasses. Here we go, so it's fifty-eight.
Yes, the, the fifty-eight thousand, three hundred dollars, that would be something that would come out of the general fund temporarily until we start to gain our revenue. I was trying to find that number myself. Until we start to dr, to bring in our revenues and immediately when the reservation starts, the, the, the dollars will be flowing in.
Okay, that was my question then. Okay, because I thought that eight thousand dollars, I'm like, is that an annual fee? But it's a fifty-eight.
No, and, and Commissioner, the, the, the bigger item here is that we've never run this. So this is, uh, for us to operate it and I think it's a very conservative start for us. Certainly, we're going to watch the numbers. We're going to keep an eye, we'll keep an eye on that. And certainly we feel very confident that the reservations are certainly going to make a huge difference.
Yeah, hopefully. Also, a little concerned though, there's a lot of people that start calling on January first.
They're calling now.
Okay, so they're calling now.
They are calling now.
And it's going to be really difficult to figure out, because if somebody books online, that's immediate. And then what do you do? How do you backdate those phone calls? How do you, how's that? And that's not up to us to manage that. That's up to the city manager and you. But those are just some of my concerns, so.
No, I can, I can answer a couple of those, Commissioner. Everything is going to be in, uh, through the online system. If somebody walks into city hall and they want to book one, we're going to work towards doing that. We may, for some folks, we've already had a local person come in and said, I want to book a site. They want to give us a check and they don't do internet. They don't do anything of that nature. So we're going to work through recreation coordinator, even somewhere where the folks can give us the money. We'll register them online and get that going. There's going to be a little bit of a, a learning for some of this as well. And one caveat to, that hopefully on Wednesday, when we meet with the people at My, My Sites and their PSN, um, we're looking, they're not sure if we can launch on January first, so to speak. And that's only just trying to tie the whole financial system and reservations together. And I, there, our intent is if it's January fourth, if it's January seventh, I don't think we'd go beyond that. But sometime, and we're going to find out more on Wednesday, it may end up being a bit of an odd date, like January third, so that we can launch everything. Our website, the city's website will change, that'll go up, the date, the dates will go up and then we'll be ready to, to serve the folks. So it is exciting.
Commissioner Baker?
Um, I'm super excited about this. I think it's going to make the function of the campground and, uh, your job a lot easier as far as coordinating all this. My question is, um, since this is kind of entwined with promoting the polar Malcolm Field and Sherman Park as well, is there a way to integrate the system so you can take reservations for Sherman Park Campground or to rent the pavilion or ice time and so forth?
The, that's a good question, Commissioner. One of the items that we're looking at almost, uh, sometime over the winter, once we get this reservation system up and going for Anni, it's our intention to start working towards putting this to work for us as well. And we can do that for the Sherman Park Campground. There is nuts and bolts and things that we've got to do to make it work. Um, and also potentially even, uh, the, um, pavilion at Sherman Park. When it's getting into ice time, it gets a little bit more intricate with that and that might be a little bit more difficult to do, um, but certainly it, this, this system is, and they do other things. So we're going to work to expand and do those types of things. But this is kind of a, out of the chute, we're going to make it work. Lot, a lot of promising things.
Uh, question for the city manager. So with that, by integrating those things down the road, you know, as we get one implemented and you go to another, will, is it just one flat rate and we get to use the system for multiple things? Or are we going to have to pay more money to this My, whatever it's called?
My Sites.
My Sites.
Right, thanks, Commissioner. And I think it would be per transaction, which it would be for My Sites agreement. I do know that in regards to marketing, uh, I know that through this process, you know, we know that first impressions matter with the city managing the campground. And Department of Public Works and Recreation has obtained all of the contact information for people who have stayed at the campground in the past. So we intend to use that kind of contact information to reach out, send emails, send promotional, uh, types of, of items in an effort to try to, you know, build up the brand of the campground further to generate those types of revenues, aggressively market, uh, the parks and recreation facilities. As part of the portfolio, whether it's reserving at Sherman Park or at a different facility, it would be per transaction though.
So we wouldn't have to do anything more to, than what we're doing right now to implement the other entities and?
I think that may be true, but if city administration expands this into a different area of operation, we would return this to the city commission for authorization, just to ensure that we have the approval, uh, from city commission to expand it into a different area of function.
Have you, has the city administration thought about, since you're doing Anni Osborne already and we control Sherman, right, as well?
A different site.
To put them kind of on the same website, would that be? You see what I'm getting at here?
Right, certainly, I think our, our approach is to market all of our parks and recreation assets as a whole, uh, as a vibrant whole, which they are. And so that's certainly a possibility.
I think it would be an, uh, an easy tie-in if you're doing it for the one to just add in the other, just a suggestion, um, because I think online reservation, especially for the younger generation, that's kind of how they do things. And if you can tie it in right away, right?
Even internally, we've held discussions about, do we research, uh, mobile apps so that somebody who's staying at the campground will have access to information? Maybe it can integrate with, uh, different kinds of services that will support their state in the community.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Collins?
Thank you. When I'm looking at the reservation and cancellation policies, uh, is that something that you guys researched?
Commissioner, that's a very good question. I did research that and that is very, very, uh, boilerplate to the state of Michigan. And what they utilize and I, and in one of my discussions with the folks in Potoski, they're saying you need to have something in place, um, because if you don't, it can get really out of hand. And I talked to them at length and they said that they're adopting what the state of Michigan has. So I went to the state of Michigan's website and pretty much what it is, is the longer you hold a reservation, uh, the more you're holding it for them. And, and there's a percent that, uh, you could hold a ninety day reservation for ninety days and someone gives it up at the last minute. So the city has to protect themselves and that's all that that was, was so that it's fair for the city.
So with that, and I don't, obviously you've gone out to the Michigan DNR.
Yes.
Website then.
Yes, sir.
Like Burt Lake and Indian River and all those tying together from that one site?
The, to the Michigan, uh, Department of Natural Resources is where I went. I didn't go to all the individual campgrounds.
But if you go to that site, if you go into it, you actually click in and put in what campground you want to go to and what area?
I believe so.
So that's just to, um, Commissioner Baker's point that it's a very easy tie-in because this is very similar. Um, the, and again, that's up to you guys. Um, the only thing that I was looking at on here that I haven't seen is the walk-in cash customers charge of three dollars. So I do a lot of Marina hopping and it's basically a Michigan DNR website. And I've never seen anything where, when I've gone into a slip with a Marine or even a, a state park that they charge me a registration fee. I mean, I realize it's only three dollars, but I don't know if it's something that you're going to get pushback on. And then the other thing is, is that you have reservations that are canceled on the same day they are created. They're going to be assessed a ten dollar cancellation modification fee. That doesn't really make sense to me because the way that, that it's set up, I understand is that if you make the reservation, you're charged the eight dollars for making the reservation. And if you cancel the reservation, you're still charged the eight bucks. So are you saying here that you're going to be charged the eight dollars? Plus if you cancel it, we're going to hit you for another ten?
Or is it a modification fee? If we, then it's staff involvement and that's partially why I believe that's there. Um, and the, the walk-in cash customers of three dollars, answer to that one is because we're not investing in any software per deep, for the city, that's where the three dollar fee comes in. So every time, whether it's a cash customer, we don't want to lose that because we have to pay that. But if they're a cash customer, then there's no, um, PSN charges because we're not using the credit. So, and, and I believe that once we get into the season, once we get into the system, there's going to end up being some tweaks as well. So we, the, the intention was not to reinvent any wheel, but do, um, what a lot of other folks have been doing for a lot of years. So hopefully that answers your question and, and if something's not quite working out, we'll have to take a look at it, uh, revisit that.
I'm good with that. I'm good, thanks.
Commissioner Gary?
Make a motion to approve the amended operational budget online reservation system agreement and 2019 fee schedule for the Anni Osborne Campground.
Support.
Spin move supported. Are there any further questions? Rule call please.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Bosmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you, Dan. City manager?
Thank you. Item five, under the city manager's report, would provide approval for the property transfer for Lake Superior State University's Center for Freshwater Research and Education. Again, city engineer Basista.
Again, evening, Lina.
Again, good evening. Back in March, you, uh, approved a, uh, execution of a property transfer agreement with Lake Superior State University to, uh, for them to construct their Center for Freshwater Research on, uh, existing Alfred Park property. And since that time, LSSU's been working, uh, to get, uh, their grant approval through the state and working with their, um, consultant for, to start design. So as part of the, uh, site plan review and, and site planning, uh, it was, we were working out what the boundary would be with, um, for the, uh, for the site and also the location of Salmon Runway. And I have the site plan, uh, up. Oh, it's up, okay. So, um, for reference, uh, Portage Avenue is on the right-hand side of the site plan and waterfront is on the, on the right. And this is, uh, currently the parking lot area of Alfred Park. And the seafree, proposed seafree building is, is here with their, um, parking lot and then relocated, uh, Salmon Runway, uh, coming off of Portage is slightly shifted to the east from where it currently is and would come through, through the site and, and currently in a type of cul-de-sac turnaround area. This, as part of the construction, uh, LSSU would be building the first leg of the ten-foot bicycle, um, or multi-use trail that would ultimately continue to the waterfront and extend along the waterfront and wrap around Alfred Park and then back out to the sidewalk on Portage Avenue. So this represents, this picture represents what LSSU would be constructing as part of this project. Now, as you know, um, the, uh, city also applied for Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant to make additional park improvements, which, uh, I believe that would also help extend the pathway and provide for, uh, amenities, park amenities in, in this area. This, this area actually pushes the, um, fence that's currently there to the east. Um, this, this is the, um, Command and Control Center building. The big, large bathroom, Alfred Park bathroom. Um, but anyway, uh, so the, the park, uh, in parking would be in this area, shifted to this side of the park as opposed to being out in front. Um, the, the red line represents, uh, LSSU's current, um, property, proposed property boundary. However, in light of, um, good chances that we're going to get the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Grant to, you know, spend money, more money on the park. And, uh, the next item, the, uh, status report on the build grant for doing the carbide dock, um, repair, then we know now that there will be city improvements on the city property. And so when we first started talking to LSSU about their boundary and, and so forth, even though we, we all agreed, you know, as part of the agreement, that there would be a shared, um, responsibility and, and the whole site would be public, be considered public park. Uh, we now know, you know, that we, the city will be making improvements as well. And so I don't think LSSU has to feel that they need to as much, um, area to, to make improvements on for their site to be, uh, attractive and aesthetically pleasing. Um, whereas before, see, they cannot spend any of their money outside of the property boundary that we are transferring to them. So all of their money, grant money and their, their match has to be spent within their property. Um, so, uh, that's why I think that the, the boundary was initially proposed is a little bit larger so that they just had a nice buffer around them for their, their improvements, make it look more park-like. But knowing that the whole area is going to be improved, I, um, would, would like to push back the boundary that's, uh, closer to the waterfront, push it back a little bit, push the boundary on the Portage, um, side to closer to their parking lot. Uh, it might need some more turns and, and twists for their, for their actual, um, property boundary. But, um, that's what we'll be proposing. So the motion is, is for you to, in concept, approve the, uh, site plan and in general, the boundary, at least as a maximum boundary. And then we'll be working with them to narrow that down and, and reconfigure it a little bit so that it, it meets, completely meets our needs, especially in light of, uh, the work that we will be doing on the waterfront. And, and through the center of the site, I didn't say, but that will be a public road. Salmon Runway will continue to be a public road. So their, their property, um, will, uh, be on either side of Salmon Runway.
Just a question I had today, in fact, uh, Alfred Park will continue to be Alfred Park. What the seafree is doing is, is certainly tremendous and we're happy, but, um, once we're done, Alfred, the Alfred Park will come back and, uh.
Correct.
And, and the improvements, and we'll get to that here just shortly, but, um, okay. We need a motion? Uh, let's go to Commissioner Talantino.
Sure. Uh, make a motion to approve the LSSU Seafree Site Plan and authorize the city manager and city engineer to finalize the property boundary and to transfer the property to Lake Superior State University.
Support.
Spin move supported. Are there any questions? Rule call please.
Commissioner Gary?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Talantino?
Yes.
Commissioner Torri?
Yes.
Mayor Bosmas?
Yes.
Commissioner Baker?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you. Thank you, Lina. Don't go far.
That concludes the city manager's report. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. Item H, the status report, back to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. First item under status reports is an update regarding the carbide dock repair and East Easterday Avenue reconstruction build grant announcement.
Okay, and before you start, we're going to have a couple of people come up to just say a few words. Um, we have with us tonight, uh, US Senator Gary Peters' office person here in the UP, Caitlin Rader. And, uh, and she's being followed up by our own, uh, former commissioner and, uh, of course, US Senator Debbie Stavon, our, um, UP representative. These, they're both housed in the Marquette area. Someday maybe we'll get them over here in Sault Ste. Marie, but because that's centrally located. But they have just a few words and, uh, thank you very much for all your efforts and certainly the senator's efforts, uh, and certainly, uh, Representative Bergman. Uh, we knew it took the whole, the whole contingency, so Caitlin, we'll let you go first. You can talk to us about it.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for having me here tonight. Um, so on behalf of, uh, Senator Peters, I'd like to say congratulations to all of you in the city for the hard work that's been put in, the leadership that's been shown over many years. years of applying for Tiger and now Build, and congratulations on $20.7 million for this build grant for this year to repair the carbide dock. This is really something special for the city and in my opinion, it's a trifecta. So we have the new lock being built, we're gonna have the dock, and then we have the seafree. So I know the senator is just so happy and really congratulations on all your hard work. This dock is particularly important as it's a port of entry. The senator, I'd like to note, has just become the ranking member of the Homeland Security Committee. So this is something that he'll definitely have jurisdiction over, and we're really looking forward to the new Congress and the senator's new role and, of course, working with Senior Senator Debbie Stabenow and, of course, continuing our good relationship with Congressman Bergman and and the city of Sioux-St. Marie. So thank you so much for having me here tonight and congratulations.
Well, it's our pleasure. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah. Our friend Jay.
To echo my the comments from my colleague Caitlin Rader, it's always great to be back in Sioux-St. Marie and to bring good news. I think that it goes without saying how important the carbide dock is, not only to the community, but to, you know, our long-term longevity. And certainly, the senator knows the importance of quality, good infrastructure in Sioux-St. Marie specifically. So it's it's tremendous to be here tonight to congratulate you on the build grant, to commend city manager Basista for all the hard work and the city manager Oliver Turner for all the hard work.
City engineer Basista and
That's what I meant. That's what I meant to say. Well, she might be after, you know, Oliver's Oliver had a slip earlier, so. But it's 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 important to commend those who did a lot of the great work on this project. And just to give you some context on these build grants, they're incredibly competitive. We wrote on my office letters of support for, I think, 10 or 12 different projects across the U.P. alone, not to mention how many downstate, and only two in the entire state of Michigan were funded, the one here in Sioux-St. Marie and the one down in Berrien County. So I think it really underscores how unlikely it was that we would get this grant, but it's tremendous that we did. So I hope you guys understand that, I mean, you guys were up against it. When I first got the news, I was like, are you sure? Like, double-check that before I make calls, you know, double-check Sioux-St. Marie, right? So it's just exciting, exciting news. And so I couldn't be happier, and I just wanted to bring congratulations on behalf of the senators.
Thank you very much, Jay. And just keep the presents coming.
I if I may, I did forget something. My colleague brought a memory to my mind. So this was a very competitive process, and I forgot to to say that the senator did have a chance to speak with Secretary Chow of the Department of Transportation before this award was granted. So it was very competitive, and thank you very much for all of your work. If it wasn't for your input that you had given me initially, then it would have been certainly not as easy to give my report. And definitely, the senator relied on your information in order to speak with the secretary. So thank you again. That was it. I just wanted to double back on that one before I forgot, because that is good. That is good. You all did so much good work, so thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. Thank you. Okay, Linda, and certainly thank Linda personally for all of her efforts.
And I and I appreciate that promotion to the manager. It's very exciting that we received this grant. It's a $21.7 million project with a $20.7 million build grant. It's very exciting to receive. And as Caitlin and and Jay said, it was very competitive. There were 91 projects awarded grants throughout the United States out of 851 applications. And I would say and thank our senators, especially Senator Peters, for personally talking to Secretary Chow, because when Angie Patterson and I were on the phone call with the Department of Transportation build grant debriefing representative from our Tiger grant, he gave us lots of tips, and I actually sent a thank you to him for for his help in the debriefing. But he he basically told us we had to have an in in Washington for our project to be recognized. So whatever help we got from our our representatives and our senators absolutely helped us get be one of the 91 out of 851 applications being
What a Christmas present, right?
Secretary Chow. So and it we are one of 62 applications that are there, projects that are from rural communities. And this year, the build grants were there was more focus on rural communities, so of course, that helped us as well. But also, I would say, an excellent application that exposed the importance of the carbide dock, not only on all of the transit, freighter transit that passes us, but in support of the locks project. I'm sure that helped with get noticed as far as our application. And so I would like to thank my in my office, Angie Patterson. She has done an excellent job with all of our grants as far as helping me write them and and administering our grants. I I give one or two sentences and give the idea of what we want to say, and she's the one who writes it. And so I can't
She's got a gift.
thank her enough for her her talents on on putting my two-sentence, you know, concise thoughts into something that, you know, really is more interesting for people to read and
And the city manager mentioned that there's no cash match, which is another tremendous thing for us.
That's correct. So the the entire grant is proposed with our state special legislative grant that the state received. And that was another aspect of of the criteria for the grant was how much non-federal funds were being committed to the project. So that million-dollar special legislative grant absolutely was another component of our award, so.
We're talking also about, I think this afternoon, the manager and I were talking about the the front of the in front of the seafree and the public access and the bike and trail that's gonna go down toward the water and then back back out. It'll be a, what would we call it? Would you say there's gonna be a decking or?
Boardwalk.
Boardwalk.
Yep.
Well, actually, see, a
So
greatest improvement.
Yes, so the so the plan, at one time, before the seafree came through, our our study just looked at redoing the entire dock face, same from from east to west. But since the seafree came in and there's component of water quality and and closer access to the to people to the water and and good habitat for for fish, we are proposing that the portion in front of the seafree be just be a riprap, a armored shoreline, so the it would be a natural river shoreline with a boardwalk over it for access for fishing and shipbuilding. And then the multi-use trail will, as I mentioned during the seafree item, will come in off of Portage Avenue, loop around the seafree site, and then back out into Portage. And so the the park actually will be made bigger because we're proposing to shift the fence further east, so the carbide, the maritime portion gets a little little smaller, but still be adequate for the salt deliveries. That I think that'll be our our outline for our footprint, because we know what our needs are as far as salt goes. And then from there, make the improvements to the carbide dock and and make it useful for equipment on and off and and so forth. So what that's gonna look like remains to be seen because we have options to either, based on our study that we did with the waterfront redevelopment study, we could use sheet piling and and make it a solid wall or remove the existing concrete cap and put in pile piles that are there now and basically replicate the existing dock. So we'll be looking at that right away as far as making that selection on which route we go.
People ask, when's gonna get started? That's always a question.
So we have a lot of work to do. We have to go through the federal environmental reviews and and get our preliminary and and design done and and execute the grant. And we absolutely have to have our the grant executed by September 30th of 2020, which means we need to be far enough along to have passed the federal NEPA reviews. And so I anticipate that we'll start construction in 2021. And let's not forget that this grant also includes the reconstruction of Easterday, and so we propose that in the grant as Easterday is the truck route from the dock to Ashman and and then out to the expressway. So we will be reconstructing Easterday, and the grant also includes replacement of the water and sewer, which is much needed. So the Easterday component is about $4 million. And had we not received this grant, my plan for December was how are we going to chunk up Easterday in order to get that completed at some point in the next five years? It would have had to been done in in segments because the cost would just be too much to do as one a single project.
curb and gutter also?
Replacing curb and yes, curb to curb
Right now?
and sidewalk that has not been. We've replaced a lot of sidewalks in our sidewalk replacement program, but sidewalks will get removed because we'll be doing water and sewer services, too. So it's gonna look a lot like our CSO projects had looked like.
People are asking about the sidewalks, too, so.
Yep, so we'll the sidewalks will get replaced. And so, yeah, we'll be making some lot of intersection improvements as well.
Okay, a lot a lot to talk about going forward, so. Commissioner Talantino?
I'd like to include a roundabout at Easterday Avenue, Minneapolis, so let's just keep that in mind, okay?
I think that's a great idea, Commissioner Talantino. I will definitely look into that.
That is one of
I don't know if that just won me any fans, but
That is one of Linda Basista's dying needs right there.
That's actually that is actually in the application, so we we did
We'll see.
propose that in the application.
Actually, are we gonna be reaching out to the Corps of Engineers for some expertise on their side of it? Is that something that that we have thought into about reaching out to them?
We absolutely will be discussing the Corps of Engineers with the Corps of Engineers from the permitting standpoint and the the fact that it's the their channel, shipping channel, goes right up to the face of the dock. So there definitely will be Corps of Engineers involved.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Baker?
I just want to commend you and Angie and administration for all the work. There I've heard nothing but exciting things, especially from the fishermen that have been dying to get back down there. So between this and the locks, I think the Sioux's voice really jumped forward, and it's all because of the great staff we have. So thank you so much for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Gary?
I was just going to echo the same sentiments. I know this the carbide dock's been a topic of discussion for years and years and years and years from the city commission, and I know that you've been working on the applications for a few years. And I think some of us were a little skeptical of the the dream of the build grant because it looked a little bit far-reaching, but it 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 shows the importance and significance of the piece of property that we have, which is the carbide dock in that area. And thank goodness that you did stick to it and write the grant, and it was received. So kudos to everybody that was involved and and lots of good things to come.
Thank you.
Commissioner Twardy?
Everybody needs their minute, so, yeah, again, thank you to you. But I also want to say that I I think it has to do a lot with a great legislative team. I really believe, like, when we had the meeting on, I think it was primary election day with Jack Bergman, and then we know that we have Caitlin Rader and we know that we have Jake Gage, who are constantly fighting for us. So I think it really comes back to building those relationships, and we talk about that every year when we go down to the Capitol, how important how important the legislative priorities are, and that's how we got the million dollars in the first place, is keeping those relationships and building those relationships. So knowing that we've got them fighting for us over in Washington, it it really, really helps out.
Absolutely. As I said, we needed that.
And no small part, the collaboration that exists in this community
Correct.
with the amount of people that we have, like the Sioux tribe, like the Corps, like others that are the boats that travel up and down and and having that function, and you know that that's a that's a dock that they need.
Yeah, we we had
like carriers associated.
We had letters of support from many of our partners and and stakeholders in the carbide dock, and we without those, I'm sure
Yeah, I mean, it all it all ties together, working relationships with within the commission, within the community, within the state, and within the federal. I mean, it all makes a great story, and it doesn't work without it.
Right.
If you don't have it, it will never happen, you know, so. No, it's great.
Thank you.
City manager, you want to say?
I feel as nothing can be added to that.
Moving on, no. What do we got next? Thank you, Linda.
Second item under status report is the year-end report from the Economic Development Corporation.
The year-end report? What time is it now? I know he's quick.
I've got Sarah here, office coordinator. Good evening, mayor and commission.
Evening, sir.
Thank you. And this is Sarah. She'll keep me flowing here and keep it brief as I can. Thank you for this opportunity. 2018 was a wonderful year for us, and we've also included and welcomed two new board members to our to our EDC board. We're pleased to have many new businesses in our smart zone in our EDC. Go to the next page there. And we'll look forward to helping them as well incubate, including several firms from from Canada. And we've also faced many challenges in our local manufacturing, including higher tariffs and duty rates. And that's why we applied for the expansion, as you know, of our foreign trade zone. Initial indications are that our application is flying through the system and should be approved shortly. Next. Here's our mission, and I won't read it for you, but invest in the Sioux, we'll invest in you. And here's our our board members, a list of them. And and I also want to thank Commissioner Abby Baker for being our liaison. I really appreciate it, taking your time for your incredibly busy schedule. This year, in our smart zone, we we sadly said goodbye to the Lake State Simulation Center. They've been there almost almost five years. But with with that came the opportunity to welcome several firms, Osprey, Norpro, Canadian Maple, Ideas to Production, and Cardinal Plumbing and Heating. Our revenue is growing, and that means we can fulfill more projects. And you'll see, this is our projected tenant revenue for 2018 is $80,000. And you'll also see some of the firms that I've mentioned in the bottom and and their logos, and they are proudly displayed on our on our front of our building. As you know, Sanderson Field, which is an important economic driver for our community, we did many, many improvements this year, and thanks to Tracy Leighton in our in our office, architect of the a lot of these projects, and we really appreciate her efforts. And you'll see on the graph there 985 flights with 2,200 passengers in this past year, and which is pretty remarkable for for our small airport. Event schedule, I won't go into all those, but you'll see that our our building is quite busy and our events are are numerous, and all of them take time and effort, but we're very proud of the progress we've made in each one of these, and we follow up accordingly. Highlights. I mentioned Sanderson Field with the runway and improvements. The industrial park, our vacant lots have been surveyed, and we are now certified by the state of Michigan as a certified business park, the only one in the Upper Peninsula. So we're real proud of that, and next year, we'll get the airport on that site as well. We are we were pleased to be a recipient of an East Cities Award again this year by the University of Michigan Dearborn College of Business. They awarded us with a an award for the many things that we do in our community. They highlighted our Economic Resource Alliance, and we were one of four communities selected in the state of Michigan out of 277 applicants. So we're very So, we're very proud of that and, uh, the award is proudly, uh, being, uh, displayed in our building. And this was a community-wide effort by all of our, all of our, uh, departments and all of our, our opportunities that we have, so, uh, many thanks for that. We consolidated all of our banking this year, which netted us, uh, $1,500 a month approximately in additional, uh, revenue and saved tremendous staff time. We continue to work with Lake State, uh, not only in the, um, President's Office, but the Dean's Office and the Product Development Center, and, uh, will continue to help market that facility, which benefits our community tremendously. Let's see, you'll see on page, on that page, uh, we've partnered with Lake State and we spoke at their open house on the Sim Lab and, um, and we've also continued to meet with the Coast Guard, um, and, uh, and the Integration Committee and, uh, and also the, um, promotional efforts for that. You'll see on the next page, uh, we've had, uh, uh, many, many numbers that, that fly around, but, um, the number that we are, are very proud of, of course, are the grant funds that we've received, uh, that have never been received before and, uh, something new for us, and, uh, we're very, very pleased to have that $28,000 figure. Lots of challenges, uh, opportunities owns, uh, by the federal government. We're still learning on that. Uh, we will get more information as, as we move along. Uh, the incubator, um, project, uh, where we've marketed our, our, our land, uh, at the airport. As you'll notice, uh, there are for-sale signs up there. No, the airport's not for sale, um, but the land in and around it is, and, uh, we've got some interest. Uh, we've listed not only with the multi-listing site, but Zoom Prospector, which is the official site of the state that looks for properties, and, uh, um, we have got them listed on that as well, so, we're very, looking forward to that. And you'll see some ending numbers here, um, our Manufacturing Day, which was the largest event we'd ever had, and, uh, we've had tremendous feedback on that. Um, we've joined the Eastern U.P. Board of Realtors, uh, the Twin Sioux and the Binational Project. Uh, there'll be more information coming on that, but we're looking to create a zone in Ontario and Michigan, uh, to offer free trade of merchandise and goods, and, uh, the preliminary indications are, we've got tremendous support on that as well. Briefly, that's, that's it.
Well, thank you very much, Jeff. Uh, you know, you have a great staff, uh, you've been very busy, uh, the Free Trade Zone and, uh, and the marketing that we've been doing over in Sioux, Ontario is, is paying off. I mean, they're, they're coming over and they're establishing businesses and, um, we know you've been, been very busy in the, um, the EDC complex. Um, I don't know, do you have any more room to, to rent or are you pretty full?
We can find room. We always find a nook or a cranny. Got some space that we have available, but...
Great, no, good luck in the 2019. Looks like it's going to be a very busy year.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for, thanks for your support. Okay, item number, uh, anything else, City Manager?
No. Thank you, Mayor.
We're moving on, right? Okay, item I, matters presented by the public. Anyone in the audience that'd like to make a comment at this time? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to Jay, matters presented by the City Commission. Let me just begin by talking about the ball drop on, uh, Chris, or, uh, New Year's Eve, um, at, um, Island Books and Craft, uh, Les Townsend. They happened last year, 2018, it was a great, uh, ball drop, the first ever in, in the city of Sioux St. Marie. This year, we're talking about another ball drop, maybe a ship drop by, I can't, I, I know there was some, uh, someone asking about looking like a, a freighter, you know, coming down the line, but that's going to go on again on, on New Year's Eve and, uh, we all gather in the corner and it was a very nice time and, uh, the local businesses nearby were the beneficiaries of, of before and after, so, um, uh, just try and put that on your calendar. Also, uh, on behalf of the Commissioner, I'd like to wish, uh, the, uh, public and certainly our staff and, uh, those residents of the city of Sioux St. Marie a Merry Christmas and a, a very prosperous new year. We know 2018 was, uh, you know, our three-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary and that, in fact, the ball drop is the final, um, uh, three-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary celebration, um, that will conclude, uh, the three-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, uh, of the British settlement that, or, yeah, the, the French settlement that began here in sixteen sixty-eight, so, um, we, we know it was very busy in 2018 and we were saying, and in 2019, looks like another banner year. Uh, everything we hear from, uh, Linda Hoath and the Convention and Visitors Bureau, um, they've got more, um, people involved in conventions and stuff coming in the city of Sioux St. Marie and surrounding areas, so, we, we all benefit when, when the city of Sioux St. Marie benefits and, um, outlying areas certainly, uh, are, are part of that contingency, so, uh, again, we're looking forward to 2019 and, um, wish everybody, uh, very Merry Christmas and a, and a Happy New Year again. Thanks. Say it again?
Oh, sure.
Um, we had a, a celebration with the, uh, City of Sioux St. Marie, Ontario Council and, and Mayor, and it was our turn to host and, again, I'd like to thank, uh, Jeff Holt and the EDC for, um, putting on that, uh, that, uh, party for us, uh, as the hospitality was tremendous. They, they appreciated it and we certainly appreciate it and it's their turn next year and we're already looking forward to, to 2019, uh, over in the city of Sioux St. Marie, Ontario. So, again, it was, it's a great event and with those continue to, continue to build the relationships that we, that we have and endure. Um, we, we always have a good time and now we're looking at maybe another meeting in the public. That would be the, the fifth meeting, um, in the coming future, you know, we'll, I'm sure the staff will be working on that, maybe not this year, maybe next year, so, anything else? We're good? Anyone else? Uh, let's go to Commissioner Gary.
Make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Support.
Support, all of us in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.